We were almost 1:15. Mr. Varner was getting us to that, so thank you, sir. So, we're gonna go right to public participation. Mertz, please. And then we'll go back to the morning session. So I guess I had to do this. Good afternoon. The time is now 1:20 in a quorum of the board is present. The State Board of Ed meeting of 2010, September 10, 2013 is called to order.
I have one public participation form, and that's Don Patta. If you could come to the end of the table, please.
The Network is committed to being here every meeting. Thank you.
There's five minutes for public participation, and I'll just remind Mr. Patta and as well as everyone else that the board does not engage in conversation at the board table, but are happy to hear your presentation. So whenever you're ready, we're ready.
Excuse me, we're just, I just thought we were abandoned by our groups here. I don't see anyone on the.
No, it's all right.
Excuse us.
Well, there's only one public comment today, so.
Take your time.
Thanks so much. Hi, my name is Don Patta, and I am here representing the Network of Michigan Educators today. The Network is a group of award-winning teachers from all over the state of Michigan. We're trying to spread the good word that we do as educators in Michigan all the time. I'm also here representing Gross Point Public Schools today. I teach at Gross Point North High School, and you may have heard something about Gross Point North High School recently. It's interesting that I'm here. I'm not here with Gary, although Gary and I are colleagues, and I'll call him out a little bit. I've been at North for a little longer than Gary, and he's actually a former student of mine. Not that, not that my outstanding pedagogy has, you know, caused any success, but I'd like to think that maybe, maybe a little bit rubbed off along the way. So, I've been teaching for about 15 years, and I teach with a fully constructive inquiry-based methodology. I teach physics called the modeling method, and it's very successful for me and everyone else that I know that does it, because it's very kids-centered. As a whole concept, that's where it's at. I started teaching about 15 years ago and was very naive, pretty much had no idea what I was doing for the first couple of years, but you don't know that you don't know until someone calls and says, hey, listen, my mentor teacher from down the road called and said, I'm teaching this workshop over the summer, why don't you come? And I said, oh, that's great, so let's go take this workshop, and it was a revelation. It changed my life, because I had a good sense of teaching and learning, but didn't know how to do it. But I took this workshop to learn this, this modeling method, how to really reach kids and make it kids-centered, and all of a sudden, I was like, oh, my gosh, I can now teach the way I've always wanted to teach. And from then on, it's just, I've just put the pedal to the metal, and I've just been cruising. So, let's talk about my classroom real quick, because, you know, I got five minutes, let's make it about me real fast. So I got a, if you look at like a three-day inquiry cycle in my classroom, the kids get a physical situation, they start asking questions about it, what can we do, what can we measure? Then, they design their own experiments, and they do the measuring. And then I say, okay, that's really great, and what are you gonna do with it? And so they're like, okay, this is what we think it is, and they analyze their data, and they represent it on these two-foot-by-three-foot dry erase whiteboards. And I get to sit back and, you know, check for understanding and ask cool questions. We call it Socratic dialogue, right? And then everyone, they finish their whiteboards, we get in this big circle in my classroom, it's 30 kids in a circle, and they all have their, you know, their group whiteboards in front of them, and they're asking questions to each other. And the kids have to represent and then defend all their data and their conclusions. The best part about this is that in my classroom, inquiry is not something you do occasionally. It's a way of life. That's just how we do it. And it's so fun for the kids, because this inquiry method, this modeling method that we use, was developed at Arizona State in the mid-'90s, and it's so kids-centered that they take to it like a fish in water. And so all of a sudden, it's ingrained as to how they learn, and they just run with it. And it's just fun. It's fun for everybody, and that's why I love going to school every day. Once they do that, all of a sudden, it opens them up for everything else. We now do project-based learning in the classroom. Some people struggle with project-based learning, because they're like, well, how do we get the kids to do it? It's not a problem for us, because the whole class is kids-centered. So I'm like, here, listen, build a spaghetti bridge, no problem. Build a mousetrap car, build a marshmallow catapult. Not that these things are unique to my classroom or our school, but the kids go for it with this reckless abandon, where they can express their creativity. And that's what I love the most. It all culminates with this cardboard boat race. I would love to take some credit for it, but Gary brought it to us. He's like, let's have kids build two-man cardboard boats and race them in the pool. I'm like, I'm sorry, what are we gonna do? And he said, let's just do it, and we did. And now it's become like a school event, it's changed the culture of the school. And it's amazing. I, when Superintendent Flanagan was at the school last year to prevent Gary, present Gary with the award, he visited some classrooms and saw this infectious creativity that we have at the school, and he says, how do we take it to more schools? I'm lucky enough to teach a class, the same workshop that I took that changed my life for other physics teachers in the summer. And it has also been really great for me to learn and work with other teachers, and I've changed some other teachers' lives through this. And they tell me, I heard one the other day that says, I was planning on retiring, 25-year veteran, I was planning on retiring in five years, he says, now, I'm teaching for another 10, because this is gonna be so fun for my kids. So, I'd be remiss if I didn't ask for something in my quick time, and I want to say that we need the next-generation science standards, the NGSS. This is gonna push teachers toward more inquiry, and it's gonna allow us to teach the way that we've always wanted to teach. So, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would Einstein say that this five-minute time thing is real, or?
Well, you know, our perception of it may be real.
That's all relative.
Thanks, Don.
Are there any more public participation forms?
Thank you.
It was great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Gave us a boost for the afternoon. Thank you, that was a nice. We're gonna go and we're gonna introduce, we're lucky to have some new team members at MDE, and we're gonna move right to that, and then you are genuinely welcome to stay the rest of the meeting if you'd like or not, but we want to at least give you that option if you felt that you needed to get back.
It's a privilege, you're taking that work home.
So who's starting that from our deputy group?
I will.
Susan, thank you.
It would be great to introduce Diane Lam, who is a person in the Child Development Care, which is currently held in charge of the job is and some details about yourself. I work in the Child Provider Enrollment Unit, so it's for people that are unlicensed daycare providers for children, and we work at screening them to make sure that the child is in a safe environment. And I have been with the state since 1999 in the Department of Treasury, Department of Community Health, Licensed and Regulatory Affairs, and now Education.
Thank you, welcome.
Hi, I'm here for Carol Wallenberg, who's not here, she's over in Italy right now, but I have the privilege to introduce Matt Kaser, who's in the Library of Michigan. Talk a little bit about yourself, maybe, great.
Hello, my name's Matt Kaser. I work at the Library of Michigan. I'm a reference librarian, and I assist state employees with reverence and research requests. And as necessary, I'll be helping with outreach and training with state employees on our collections and services. And before here, I worked at the Capital Area District Libraries right down the road at the downtown branch. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, from Ed Services, we have Kenial Ferguson from the School Reform Office. If you'd like to tell us a little bit about yourself, that would be excellent as well.
Good afternoon. I work in the School Reform Office, particularly with the Court of Appeals Work Group, where I'm designing the Facebook page and doing a little bit of research according to best practices in schools that are selling. I've been at the MDE for about a month now. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Carrie Noes was also able to join us at the last minute, so I think.
That's okay. I work in the Office of Special Education. My name's Carrie Noes, and I'm a consultant with the Program Accountability Unit, and specifically, I am a complaint investigator, and I also answer the telephone for the Special Education Information Desk from the community. And I've worked here for only a month, so I'm really enjoying it.
Let's welcome the whole team to our. By the way, can I refer my wife to the complaint administrator? Is this a way to smooth that? Thank you, Dan, that was.
How do you know it's good?
Listening, honey, I'm just kidding, honey, if you're watching. She does, in a very odd way, watch this periodically. Well, this is, boy, timely. Our next item, we're going back to the morning, it's Item C. It's a Presentation of the Michigan Council for Educator Effectiveness, and I think Dean Ball is presenting tomorrow to Senator Pavlov's committee. And Joseph, as you know, has been our point person on that, even though I saw a presentation briefly, I was with the Ed Alliance for a little bit yesterday, and they had Jennifer Hammond there, who did a great job, and at least the part I stood in, or sat in on, in trying to brief some of them, and gave high praise to Joseph, even though he was listed as a non-voting member, that he had a lot of influence. So, with that, your request was that he give us some, a summary of that. As you know, the law required, and appropriately so, that this report be made available to the board. But it's one thing to be made available, it's another thing to understand elements of it, so that's the intent for this item today.
Thank you. So, we've entitled this one Unpacking the MCE Recommendations. Just a little bit about this presentation, this is a factual summary of the recommendations of the Michigan Council for Educator Effectiveness, as included in this report. It is not an exhaustive review of the MCE recommendations, otherwise I'd just read that, so. And it is, it is not a description of future requirements. Just to be clear, these are recommendations only at this point, they still have to be deliberated upon and put into legislation. So the MCE vision was to develop a fair, transparent, and feasible evaluation system for teachers and school administrators. That's a high task. The system is to be based on rigorous standards of professional practice and of measurement. The goals of the system are to contribute to enhanced instruction, improving student achievement, and support ongoing professional learning. So, I thought it was, you know, I just read that off the screen, I don't typically do that when I give a presentation, but I think that's an important piece of what this group did, was really to make this a, an improvement-focused system that is fair, transparent, and feasible. Those are really the guiding principles by which the committee did its work. So some of the big ideas from the report are a significant, a recommendation for a significant change in the timelines. So, the timeline, as it currently stands in legislation, is that the statewide system is supposed to go into effect this school year. The timeline recommended by the MCE is that we have legislation and RFP or contract development happening this year, that next year it be systems, guidelines, and training development, so that we actually have some time to make sure that the systems are done well. And of course, as you know, legislation and RFP contract development takes time. This is still an aggressive timeline. Then, systems, guideline, and training development, after we have contractors in place, that also takes time, and this is still an aggressive timeline. And for the 2015-16 school year is implementation of the new statewide system. Big ideas continued, to continue the existing local systems until that initial implementation year, and again, an emphasis on feedback and improvement, where training is key, feedback is very important, in being able to provide information about where people need to improve, even those who are rated as professional. And, and also that results be protected from disclosure, so this remains an improvement-focused system. So, some recommendations regarding teacher evaluation, teacher evaluation as recommended is to be based 50% upon professional practice and 50% upon student growth or value-added modeling, and the acronym for that is VAM, and I'll probably use that from here on. So, based on that overall evaluation, the recommendations are that there be three categories rather than the four that were previously in statute, and that if a teacher is rated as professional at the end of the year, that if that happens three years in a row, that teacher would be eligible for an advanced role. And if they have three in a row, they would also not be required to have an evaluation every year, but could have that happen every other year. Provisional, if a teacher is identified as provisional, they, for three consecutive years, they would be counseled out of the role within the district, but may be placed in a different role within the district. And if there are two consecutive years of ineffective ratings, they would be, the recommendation is that they would be terminated from their role in the LEA, but that, again, is just in the, in that given LEA. A little bit of background about why it went from four to three, it was pretty clear that there are at least two categories that needed to be identified, those that urgently need assistance, urgently need improvement, those that are at risk of falling into that category, and then the remainder. So, based on those needs that were identified by the MCE, that is why we got to the three recommended categories rather than four. So talking about the professional practice portion of the overall evaluation, we are looking at a recommendation of 40 to 50% of that coming from classroom observations, and 0 to 10% of that coming from other data. Whether or not a district uses data beyond the classroom observations would be up to the district. So for the classroom observation portion, the recommendation is that the state issue an RFP for an observation system, a teacher observation system, and that may be bid on by the four vendor systems that were piloted under the MCE pilot, and the state is to award a contract to only one vendor, and then to pay for training and system use on behalf of districts. The other data could come from many different sources, for example, student surveys, parent surveys, portfolios, and that really is up to the, up to the local district, whether or not they use other data, and what kinds of data they would use there. On the student growth or value-added side, we would be looking at value-added from required state assessments, either being 0% or between 25 and 50%, okay? Why that? The issue there is that it would be required to be at least 25% for teachers who were responsible for student growth in grades and subjects where growth data are available from mandated state assessments. That would be for individual teachers, grades fourth or eighth, reading and math currently. That may be expanded in the future, but currently, that's where that lies. For, and a district could opt to have that comprise the full 50% that is based on student growth. But it's not applicable for teachers who are not responsible for student growth in grades and subjects where growth data are not available. And the recommendations that the state issue an RFP are request for proposals for a, for VAM services, and to provide the VAM measures back to districts. That would also require some modifications to state systems to make sure that we capture all the appropriate data to appropriately attribute an appeal for students to be removed from a specific teacher's VAM scores and so on. The VAM from optional state assessments would be applicable for teachers teaching in core subjects and grades where the district adopts optional state-provided assessments, which we are developing at this point, so Science and Social Studies, K-2 English, Language Arts and Math, the credit content assessments for the Michigan Merritt Credits, and so on. And that could comprise between 0 and 50% of the evaluation, depending on district desires. Then, there's building VAM from required state assessments, and that could be between 0 and 5% of the overall evaluation. So, it is possible to create VAM scores for a teacher, and VAM scores for a building, and VAM scores for a whole district. You can do that in a lot of different ways. And allowing for building VAM scores to be applied directly to individual teachers' overall evaluation encourages teamwork. That was kind of the rationale behind that, but it's limited to a very small percentage to assure that the vast majority of the growth measure actually comes from teachers that this, from students, the growth of the students the teacher is directly teaching. So it allows for kind of this, okay, let's go ahead and set a building-wide goal, but make sure that the vast majority comes from the students that the teacher is directly responsible for. And then there are other measures of student growth, and these, again, could be between 0 and 50%, depending on district discretion. And those could include non-VAM measures of student growth from state-provided assessments, so we provide a measure of growth that is not necessarily value-added, but it is a measure of student growth. VAM or non-VAM measures from, of student growth from district-purchased or vendor-provided assessments, and measures of student growth from locally-developed assessments, and locally-developed student learning objectives. And, and one of the interesting things about the student learning objectives is that the council felt like that was a really important part of this. Making this available is a really important part of this, because it allows individual educators to get, become more invested in monitoring, setting goals for, kind of unpacking the growth that individual students are achieving over time. And it could, it also is a, you know, actually, learning how to develop good student learning objectives, learning how to measure them, is, can also be very good professional development. Yes?
So if I have a French teacher, high school French teacher, we'd use another measure of student growth for, to assess the student growth, maybe 5%, but where does the other 45% come from in a case like that?
Okay, so, and this is, this is where things get a little bit tricky, because, of course, we don't have state-mandated growth data for every teacher, right? So, this other measures of student growth could be 0 to 50%. So, if you have a student, if you end up setting up student learning objectives for those French students, or you were able to purchase a, a French assessment from, from a vendor, you could use that for the full 50%, or you could use some kind of mix of all of these to comprise the full 50% that is based on student growth.
That I understand, but where does the other 50% come in?
On the professional practice part is the other 50%.
Oh, so this 50% is the, identical with the 50% of student growth as opposed to the, okay, I was thinking it was half of the student growth score.
Yeah, so.
Okay.
Apparently, the printouts didn't do an adequate job of recreating the shadows that I put from, from one to the other, so my apologies for that. So, here's an example, yes.
Just to, just clarifying, so in other words, what adds up from the four boxes will add up to 50%, not 100%?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Yes. Thank you for the clarification. So, then comes the difficult task of combining the professional practice metrics with the student growth metrics. Those are two, hopefully strongly related things, but they are separate things. And you would not necessarily just want to put them on one big scale, because mixing them together, it kind of assumes that they're the same thing. These really are different things. So, one of the ways that someone could do this, and this is not to say this is the recommendation for how it would happen in every district, but this is an example of how it could happen. You could divide up the professional practice into three categories, you could divide up the student growth metric into three categories, and then create some kind of table where you say, okay, if they are professional on professional practice and they meet expectations with student growth, we're gonna call that overall label, that overall evaluation, professional. So, and so on and so forth. You would look at where they lie on both sides of that, and, and come to an overall recommendation for whether or not that individual educator is rated as professional, provisional, or ineffective. So, on administrator evaluation, you have a very similar piece. The only difference here is that if you're rated professional for three consecutive years, you're already in a leadership position. So, that's not, not something that necessarily would come with that, that additional three years. Again, the professional practice side is, again, 50%, and the big difference here is it's not classroom observation that's going on with principals and central office staff and, and superintendents, it's their leadership, some kind of evaluation of their leadership role over, over individual educators, over other administrators. So, what is recommended here is the use of a professional leadership evaluation tool, not necessarily a classroom observation tool, as well as possibly other data. And the, the MCE, the MCE recommendations are silent on how much comes from each one of those. So, all we know is that the professional practice piece has to add up to 50%. So, you have to have at least both of those in there somewhere, but how much you weight each one of those is, is really at the district discretion. So on the professional leadership evaluation tool, again, the state's to issue an RFP for one of those that, the two vendors that were listed in the report. And just to give a little background on why the four vendors, going back to educator, teacher evaluations, the four vendors were selected, it was based on vendors that had adequate data regarding reliability and validity. So, there were four that had adequate reliability and validity, they were piloted to see if they could kind of scale up quickly, and they seemed to have done reasonably well. For the professional leadership evaluation tool, this is really new. There's not a lot of research out on this one. So what they looked at was more things along the lines of what systems, in the absence of good research on them, would give good feedback to evaluators, have the, have the strong potential of giving good feedback to, to principals, superintendents, and so on. And the issue is, so the intent of the recommendations is for the state to award a contract to just one, and then pay for that on behalf of districts, and then to study it, to make sure that we gather adequate evidence. On the other data, the law indicates that that must include proficiency in conducting evaluations, progress made on the school improvement plan, attendance rates, and student-parent and teacher feedback. It can also include additional things such as professional contributions, peer input, and so on. On the fifth, on the growth side, and again, thank you, Richard, for indicating that all of these here add up to the 50% for student growth. We would have value-added models from required state assessments, and this would be required to be at least 25% for administrators responsible for student growth in grades and subjects where growth data are available from mandated state assessments. And there's a little bit of a difference here with what's available for individual teachers. Again, for individual teachers, we measure students only in subsequent, in consecutive years, only from grades three to eight, meaning that there's growth data available from four to eight, English, Language Arts, and Math. Actually, for individual administrators, that may be, you may be able to apply that in high school, because you get, you get an assessment just before high school, then you get an assessment in 11th grade, and all of those things could be looked at, okay, how much growth was observed from beginning of high school until the Michigan Merritt exam? So you could have more applicability for administrators on this. It could be up to 50% for administrators for whom it's applicable, and the state is, again, to issue that RFP. Same thing for optional state assessments, districts could opt with those additional state assessments to adopt those, and then use those in the administrator evaluations. And then, again, the same sets of measures, or other measures of student growth would be available to be used in administrator evaluations at district discretion. Very similar here, I'm not gonna go through the whole thing again, it's just the same kind of coming to a conclusion from the two metrics. And then there's some recommendations about teacher certification, how one moves from provisional to professional teacher certification. So teachers wishing to move from provisional to professional certificate must receive a professional rating for three successive years immediately prior to applying for the professional certificate, with an exception. If they don't, and they've received at least three, three professional ratings, even though they may not be consecutive, and they have their administrator's recommendation, they might, they may be moved to professional. And teachers not meeting the requirements for advancement to a professional, professional certificate may continue to review, renew their provisional certifications again and again. Then waivers. One of the interesting things that the original law indicated was that a district needed to declare itself exempt by indicating that it was complying with the requirements of the law as specified, to use observations and growth and so on, before the MCE began its work. And that was the only requirement, is they just had to declare themselves exempt. The recommendation of the MCE was that if we receive waivers, and we were, we were supposed to actually come up with a recommendation for how to deal with waivers, that those districts that are requesting a waiver must demonstrate that their systems and processes have the same level of quality and rigor and so on, and if an LEA submits an adapted form, they have to show that they're not doing damage to the reliability and validity. And if an LEA is using an evaluation system that's really new, they have to commit to and provide a plan for gathering that kind of data about it. And the MCE also recommended that any of that declared themselves exempt would have to go through the waiver review process as well, just to make sure that we have adequate quality and rigor in those as well. So, next steps, and I, our ideal timeline, as I said at the very outset, this is pretty aggressive. So, we're talking about legislative action, digesting legislative requirements, issuing requests for proposals, evaluating bids and proposals and bids, and awarding. requests for proposals, evaluating bids and proposals and bids, and awarding contracts in the next year. That's aggressive. Then 2014, 15, doing requirements gathering, building and modifying systems, developing, training, designing guidelines, that's also pretty aggressive to do in, in a single year. And then 2015, 16, implementation.
So, questions, comments, and we'll try to stick to the ask one and let it go around table, and you can come back to your second question. Yes, ma'am?
I just have one question, and it might be really loaded, but I hear a lot, the word "assessment" a lot in this, and more "assessment." Is this going to lead to a lot more testing in our schools?
So that's, it is likely to lead to more assessment of individual students to measure their progress. It's not likely to lead to more mandated assessment. So that was very, that was very carefully indicated in, in the, in the report, is that, again, the state mandated assess, and it actually, the, one of the recommendations in the report is that state mandated assessment not be expanded.
Okay.
So that the mandated assessment remains the same. That means that when we develop these additional assessments, they're optional. We would be providing a, a service to local districts because we would be providing something for them at state cost if the recommendations are carried out, that they would otherwise have to pay for, pay for themselves. So it would be kind of a, a significant incentive for them to adopt, but not mandated. And, and it does go back to Dr. Zilei's comments previously about sometimes it's, it's more important, it, it, the issue is not waiting until the very end to find out that your student is not going to be proficient. It's about tracking that over time, making sure that you understand over time, so it's not a gotcha at the end. You really have a sense of what that trajectory is and what you need to do over time to make sure that kids are going to be where they need to be. And another important thing to remember is that it's about growth. And, and that's, that's a really important piece of this, is that we are able to see wherever students are, that students are able to obtain that growth regardless of background, regardless of demographics. And I think that's a really important piece of this, that we need to make sure we, we recognize.
Other comments, questions for Joseph? Kathleen, please.
How reliable are the assessment, value-added tests? We're basing a lot on value-added.
Yeah.
And there's been a lot of criticism of those results, and how reliable do you think they are, and are we going to be able to do this?
So there are, there are a lot of scholarly disagreements about how reliable value-added is. One of the things that is clear is that when you're measuring growth, it is less reliable than measuring status. But it's also very important to, to measure growth instead because that is so much less affected by demographics and background. So it's kind of one of those things where you would say that it is going to move us in a better direction to go with growth, which is essentially value-added measures, essentially contribution to student achievement through growth. And it, it's kind of, because it's not perfect, doesn't mean we don't use it. And that's one of the reasons that it's, that it's downweighted as much as it is, where it says, okay, only 25% based on state mandated assessment. If a district wants to go above that, they can, but the mandate is, is reasonably low. And that's also one of the reasons that we, we can, we include a lot of other things such as the observation, the other data, and the student learning objectives and so on. But yes, there are some concerns, and the, the MCE did deal directly with those concerns and looked at, okay, how do we come up with recommendations that say, you know, this is a valuable tool, but not weighted so heavily that you can't, that you can't deal with additional information?
And a follow-up question, if I may. Where, how, where is Michigan, and how good are we at the value-added tests?
At value-added modeling? We are reasonably sophisticated compared to most states in terms of our internal state staff. Actually, quite sophisticated compared to most states with our internal state staff.
I know that.
Well, I was actually not referring to me, I was referring to my staff, but thank you. But we would likely put that out for a bit rather than running it ourselves because, you know, being able to, people who have been doing this for quite some time have a lot more, a lot more sense of the pitfalls that you can run into, not just the knowledge of how do you do it. So having someone who's done this in multiple places and understands it from the operational perspective, I think is important.
That was a very sophisticated answer, thank you. Gary, I think you were next, and then Michelle, and then Dan.
So Joseph, I, I've read over some of the report myself, and I've, I've heard many of the same things in, in your report today, so thank you for those points. Could you talk a little bit about, if there were any recommendations, I haven't seen them, as to how they recommend teachers are supported between classroom observations and based on the feedback that they receive from their evaluations?
Right, so the recommendations are that, so it, it's clear in the recommendations that based on observations, teachers are supposed to receive feedback from the person who did the observations, and the principal evaluator is kind of the language that's used. So it's clear that that feedback is supposed to happen. It doesn't give a lot of specificity on how that feedback is supposed to happen. One of the things that is also clear in the recommendations is that the state would issue an RFP for training. So that specifically, training on giving feedback, coaching, conducting the observations, conducting an overall evaluation session where you combine the growth with the observations into an overall evaluation, so that there would be a lot of training for the evaluator so they know how to provide that kind of feedback to teachers, and that they know how to integrate this into an overall quality evaluation.
But then, there are no specific or explicit, rather, recommendations about, even beyond the feedback. I guess my, my question really deals more with, once that feedback is given, what are the actionable steps that happen before that next evaluation?
Right, so the, the recommendations, my recollection is the recommendation is there, that, that educators be given specific professional learning opportunities to address any identified weaknesses, or any places where they could get better. And again, one of the things, going back to three versus four categories, one of the reasons that that fourth category was not recommended, the advanced category, was to avoid giving the sense that someone's done.
Yes.
That anyone's done.
Yeah.
And that everyone can improve, and, and so that it's not just identifying weak teachers who need a lot of work, it's identifying where you can get better for strong teachers. It's everyone needs to get that feedback and needs to get that targeted professional learning. So my recollection is that is in there, but I will check and make sure that we get back to you.
Okay. Yeah, that, that's the one thing that I was, when I kind of scanned through it, I didn't see anything, and it's still, to me, that's not really that much better than what we're already using on a, on a per-district basis. And I wondered the same question now, is when I get feedback from my administrator, they tell me what I could do better and some areas to consider, and they might even give me a couple of actionable steps, but then I don't see them for some time until my next evaluation. And having that support for teachers is, I think, really what's missing to make an evaluation model really improvement-based, rather than evaluative or punitive. And I, I guess I'm still missing how this, although it claims to be improvement-focused, is supporting teachers in improvement.
So I will, I will read through again specifically for that and get back to you on that. And if it's not there, I think that's something we can certainly carry forward to the legislature. My recollection from the conversations is that was the intent.
Absolutely. Thank you.
And I noticed that Jennifer yesterday felt comfortable that it addressed the issues Gary's bringing up and the part that I was part of at the Ed Alliance, but that's, the whole thing, I'm, you're making an excellent point, of we're not keeping the eye on the ball tomorrow, starting tomorrow with the hearings, that this is about improvement, not about punishment, and that there really aren't that many ineffective teachers in reality, that everyone can be improved. And hopefully, that'll, that'll be what washes out of these hearings and not the, not maybe what was in some of the legislation when it was first put together. I heard Senator Pavlov, I was, who I thought had a, I thought said that in an appropriate way. So that's hopeful for tomorrow, that he sees this as an improvement-based document and is receiving it that way. Michelle was next, I think, and then Dan.
Yeah, I'm, I'm wondering about with the Common Core standards, with the test scores that are being used as part of the evaluation process as mandated. It seems like a, a lot of changes and a lot of things to align at the same time. So with the, is there some accommodation or understanding that the scores may drop and be able to, and that that is going to, because of the cut, because of the Common Core?
Yes, so, good question. The, if we are able to go forward with the Common Core, and we hope we are, and if we're able to go forward with an assessment in 14, 15, and we hope we are, they would have had their first Common Core assessment in the spring of 15. That would mean that their second Common Core assessment would be the first year of the actual implementation. So that it wouldn't be springing a new test on them at the same time as springing a, a statewide assessment, a statewide evaluation system. So there would be some, people would already have had an opportunity to take that Common Core assessment one time and get used to that kind of assessment, that kind of, very different type of assessment that we're going to have, before that has to be, according to the recommendations at least, included into those overall evaluations.
Good question, thank you. Dan, and then John.
Thanks, Joseph. Appreciate your effort to unpack the report. It is a multi-part question, I apologize if I've asked my peers, and if the second one.
I only asked one.
As I was saying, if the second and third questions need to be held, because others are in a queue, I'm happy to do so. First question, and do you have any sense, based on your conversation with educators around the state, and of what percentage of districts you might expect to opt for student learning objectives as opposed to the kind of standardized assessments?
So we would, I think that, we do not know at this point, really, that, that's because we don't have this kind of situation in place, under, required, and we don't actually have those, those optional state assessments up and running, will be in 14, 15. We're not sure. What we would actually hope is that they would do both, you know, get multiple sets of information. Of course, up to the district, but we, we would hope that they would do both because we think that both of those would be professionally useful. Yes, sir.
Number two, and three is very much tied to, it's just around the data system, necessary to do this, just so you know. Number two is.
We're going to have a vote at the end whether this was, Lupe's going to be the enforcer.
I can't believe he met a love I'm getting. I love you guys back. Thank you so much, this is great. Measuring growth in high schools, so very different game for measuring K8, we've got Smarter Balance, so on and so forth, high schools, but what's, so what, the report talks about using ACT, MME, 11th grade, and tying that back to something, testing the same content area in a much, much earlier grade. How do you actually then drill that down to individual educators, say at the ninth and 10th grade and 11th grade level, if you're, if you're, if it's a three-year bridge that you're, you're trying to connect?
So that's actually why I made that distinction between the three through eight being only applicable in fourth grade, English, language arts, and mathematics for individual teachers, the mandated state assessment where you might be able to have more applicability for a building administrator, because they're responsible for what happens throughout a child's tenure in, in a high school. So what happens from when they start high school to, to when they're in that, the end of 11th grade, that, that belongs to a building administrator. But what happens in it, and it gets more tricky with individual teachers in a high school because, in particular, you have a lot more differentiation in math and science. So you have, you know, Algebra I, Geometry Algebra II, Stats and Probability, then you've got, you've got Biology, Earth Science, Chemistry, Physics. So it, it doesn't make sense to hold, except for that very small portion that could be a building goal, going back to an individual educator, doesn't make sense to hold them responsible for something that is general science, if they're a physics teacher, right? So that's where we are going, where we are actually developing Michigan Merit Credit Content Assessments for each of the required credits. So, so they would be kind of pre-post, people would call them end of course, but we don't say course because it's credit, right? It's whether or not you're achieving the whole credit. So it could be a pre-post based on that credit. So we're developing that so it could be specifically looked at for individual educators based on their specific area of responsibility, but then again, that would be optional, based on not mandating additional assessment.
And the data system for all of this, so, you know, that's not my world, but I know just enough to be dangerous, and this sounds really, this sounds pretty far from where we are today.
So we currently have what's called the Teacher-Student Data Link, which does, which does have the link, so what happens, it is, we have the Michigan School Data System, CEPI, we have the Registry of Educational Personnel, CEPI, which used to not talk to each other at all, completely separate. Student-focused, teacher-focused, principal-focused, and so on. What was built was a kind of a, a link between the two through courses. So essentially, what you do is you say, I, as a district, am offering this course. It could be a third-grade general, it could be a high school physics, but we, we provide a course ID, we identify what core content area it, it aligns to, and then we link teachers to that, and we link students to that course ID, and we link teachers to that course ID, and, and we're able to provide that teacher-student data link. We actually, this is our third year, no, I think it is our third year, that we have provided back to districts for their use, as, as they see fit, a link between individual teachers and individual students that shows all of the assessment data for every student that each teacher saw. So we do have that, it is missing a couple of things. Fine-grained attendance, so that you could say, because one of the recommendations is less than 90% of attendance, automatically out of the van, right? Another one is an appeal system, saying, you know, this, this student had just a really horrendous year, can I have this student taken out? Kind of something that was anticipated in the original legislation, building that in. And then a, a system where, right now, the individual teachers could go in and say, this is the roster that has been submitted by my district, actually, that's not my student, please take this student off. And then having any of those appeals, of those changes to it be certified by the administrator who's responsible for that teacher. So those are the things that were missing, but we're, we're quite a bit of the way there.
Thought that was an excellent technique not to call that number three. Just to go end. John.
You guys are on my tracks. I'll have to come up with some new ones.
Stay on you too, try to, it's hard, you're turning. Thank you, Joseph. I've been very appreciative and supportive of the thoughtfulness and the dedicated to being supportiveness and the dedicated to improving learning outcomesness of this evaluation effort, and so I think it's terrific. I've been most interested, are we going to get support for full implementation and paying for the training and the support and the different pieces? So question is, as, as I read the report, I interpreted, we have four okayed models for the classroom assessment?
Classroom observations.
Districts can choose any of the four. One is going to be sort of a state-developed and deployed system, but we're going to pay for the equivalent of what the state one costs for any of the four, is how I interpreted it. Though someone else was confused, saying which one's going to be the state-approved, that's the only one we're going to pay for. So which is the recommendation?
The recommendation of the MCE is that the state issue an RFP that the four approved vendors could bid on, select one, and pay for the expense of all the training, the licensing, the hardware, so kind of some base cost, based on that RFP, the, the winning bidder. And then any district could choose to use any one of the other three, and the state would pay that base cost for the districts that wanted to use one of the other three. That's the recommendation of the MCE.
Because that, I think, I'm glad that's the recommendation. People reading it, even thoughtful people, are not seeing that. They think that whoever the one is, is the only one that's going to get paid for, and as we try to get legislative support for paying for it, I think it will be really helpful to say, no, we want to pay for any of these systems, but at a level that is hinged on the state-developed system, right?
Yeah, and I, just if I may add, because we worked this through last Friday, that not only would they have to pay the difference, you know, let's say it's $500 they get, and it's $800 their cost per, so they'd have to pay 300. But in a way, you have an inherent advantage to go with a state bid because we're going to get a better price. And, and so, you know, in theory, that's going to be an incentive, I think, for folks, but still have the option to go to one or the other. If this is, if this is.
But we're not trying to insist that everybody use the one option if we actually think there's four good variants.
Right.
But we are, we do, I mean, my intuition is, if they're good. But we are, I mean, my interest obviously, if they're good variants that do the job, I want to make sure we're paying for them.
Can I just clarify, just...
Yes.
So you're saying, if the winner, whoever is selected, what their cost would be, that's the amount of money that would then, a school district would get, or a school would get to do, to take one of the others that may be more expensive, but they'll all get the same exact amount of funding?
Yeah, so, under the, under the MCE recommendations, it would be a base, a base cost, and as Superintendent Flanagan said, we would most likely get a much better cost because there would be one portal between the state and the vendor, rather than seven hundred portals between an individual district and the vendor. So, it, very likely that the state would get a much better cost, but again, allowing districts to adopt one of the other three, but at that base cost.
So it would be the same amount of money? Okay, got it, thank you.
And I think what would happen is, some of them who've been, you know, my old district, where I was superintendent, they're feeling very good that they've got Labor and the Board buy-in on a particular model, and if that model didn't happen to be the one that won the proposal statewide, my guess is they'd want to stay with it. And then they'd make a judgment to pay the incremental cost, because they've already got, you know, "This works for us, and we feel good about it, and we feel it's been fair." And I think that's a fair way to approach it, the way that your task, that Dean Ball's group attended to it, because theoretically, I, the challenge is going to be what John inferred, I mean, getting this funded fully to be implemented, and I think it might have given an angle to some who may not want to do that if we, if we didn't have a fair approach to it that you just described. Fair from a fiscal point of view, I mean. Eileen, please.
I wanted to say a couple of things. The first one is that, is the State Board of Education, and of course Deborah Ball, need to market this as, market evaluation as lifting teachers, not punishing them. It's very clear in her presentations that she views it that way. It's clear in everything that we're doing, but we need to say it. I was talking to Gary briefly after the EIA was here this morning, and the EIA doesn't understand marketing, I mean, they do, but they don't. They don't, they don't get out there and proactively tell people what they're doing because they're just busy doing it. So we have to be careful, because if we're not, if we're not articulate on this, it will get away from us. The second thing is, I have a bunch of really bad examples, but we're going after a Lincoln Navigator, I tried this on my, on Mike, and it fell down flat, so we may not need a Lincoln...
You said baseline Cadillac to me, I didn't hear a Lincoln Navigator.
Yeah, Cadillac, I know, I'm going to Ford products, yeah. Maybe an Escort, or, or, what do I have, Explorer would do. Or, in an iPad application world, do we need a desktop? Or, we really don't have space for a Greyhound, so she'll be looking at a Chihuahua or a Cocker Spaniel. And the reason I say this is that, we want to do this. I knew I'd get Dan, I did it. Chihuahua or the Cocker Spaniel, see, this is the big choice. So, the, my worry in this is that it's going to become so elegant and so wonderful that it won't ever fly. And I don't know how to do it, other than how you're describing it, but I keep on thinking, iPad, mainframe, I mean, look how quickly we've gone from that, how, the first computer was a building. So, is there a different way of doing this? If the legislature balks at the cost, we don't want piecemeal, I think.
That's what we said, yeah.
Right. And if we feel that way, then can the incredible creativity that all twelve state employees have at the Department of Education, coupled with the brains of a lot of people in the state, come up with any other way to do it that wouldn't be as expensive to make sure it gets done? And I don't know the answer to that, but I would rather not forego it. I would rather not have it collapse. And I'm not saying that's going to happen, we have to advocate.
The question is, would there be a UGO within this Navigator, or whatever? And that would take a lot of, I hope today, with Cassandra's and Marty's work on this, that maybe we can get some language that, I think it's in there, but be sure to, make sure it gets codified, or at least reported, before tomorrow, or tomorrow morning. Who is next?
I had a brief...
Yes, sir.
Just, on the, on the data collection on teachers, now, how do you handle situations like team teaching? I'd want to teach with Gary here, so that I, Mr. Abud, so that I would get a good rec, good score. And things like maternity leave, or other things where class is divided between two or more teachers?
So, that's also a piece of the data system that I didn't mention that is missing. That's kind of the one last piece that I didn't mention, which is, percentage of responsibility. So, in a data system, you might default to, "I am one hundred percent responsible for this achievement and growth of this student." Or, of the growth of the student, sorry, not achievement. Or, "I'm a team teacher, fifty percent, fifty-fifty." Same kind of thing with special assignments, such as, "I am responsible for this particular student with this, with a disability." And, and I'm in a, I'm in a regular classroom, but I'm responsible specifically for that individual student. How do I apportion that responsibility between the regular classroom teacher and me? So, those are the kind of things that would also be built into this, that's one of the additional pieces that's missing.
Very good. Kathleen, please.
There's another piece to that. The teachers change sometimes, especially in urban schools, but sometimes the students are a hundred percent different at the end of the semester than they were at the beginning. How do you measure that?
Yeah, so there, there are several ways to do that, but the recommendation of the MCE is that if a student is not there in the classroom for ninety percent of the class periods, they don't count for the individual.
So they might end up with no students to, no evaluation?
It is possible, although we haven't, there are many urban legends of that kind of mobility. We actually don't see that happen very, it may happen in a very small number of cases, but the level of mobility that we've actually been able to see is not that high. But it could happen.
It is high, though, in many, I mean, you just know that teachers are changing with students, or students are changing all the time. Well, yeah, these are questions, on the whole, though, we, you know, I still repeat what we said last time, it's very thoughtful, very careful, very professional job.
And good timing, because we'll be able to talk about it under "I," to see level of support from the Board.
Way you laid it out.
And that's, I didn't articulate it very well, but to Eileen's point, I meant that could be, some of that could be addressed also during item "I." So we're good? Great, thank you. Thanks, Joseph. Great job, and I think you took a red eye to get back here. I've never made one smarter, I'm the only chief, quote "chief," who's never made one smarter balanced meeting at all. And this one was in LA, that he came back from last night, or maybe this morning, and so appreciate you being here. We're going back to the Reger meeting, or back up to the Reger meeting, and the first item is the Approval of Minutes of Reger and Committee Meeting at the Hall on August thirteenth. Moved by Dan, ordered by Cassandra. Discussion, all in favor, "I"? Post, same? Thank you. We did participation, we did new employees. President Austin, John, please.
First, thanks, Richard and Eileen, the Common Core testimony, we spent a long day there, but I think the whole process of having those discussions, and hopefully, I'm optimistic, and I hope everyone is, that they helped illuminate what's really the Common Core is and the importance of it, and I'm hopeful legislature will move soon to support its continuation. So thank everybody for helping out, too. This process of us taking the opportunity and need to inform recommendations and ideas of what school finance overhaul is needed, you know, the process that we're moving includes, we did get some graduate student assistance, thanks to the MSU at Policy Center, to help distill, I think, a series of pieces. One, first, what are the big issues and drivers of a school finance proposal, A twenty years of living with that crisis at the moment? And it continues, I hope, to help develop, looks at other states, what they do to organize and finance their schools, if they want to be high performers academically, and then what do we do about all this? What are our five, ten, or eight, or twelve big fixes that we want to encourage? And that is also the same type of information material we're taking into the good work group with Bill Rogers and legislators that Cassandra and Eileen, thank you, are participating in, so we've had two of those meetings. And I think we're, you know, we're at a moment of, we brought one draft digestion of the issues from our research team, began to discuss it at that meeting, I think it's something that we'll get some additional input into and perspective on, and maybe share to here, but also, I want to arrange a time for any and all Board members who aren't in that discussion group to meet together, to look at that material and say, "What are the big issues in school finance?" So I hope we can work out, track out where best to do it for everybody that wants to just talk that piece through. And then, next steps, I think include, in the meeting we had most recently, but the Rogers group included some of the total A veterans, which was quite interesting, I loved Glenn Oxender, I hadn't seen him in years, former Republican state representative.
He's still a Republican, but he's a former state.
Republican. There was, there was interesting and fascinating reflections on their part, and then the group's part on what they got right, what's changed in the world, and what needs fixing, so it was really very useful.
John, I'd like to interject, if you'll, this group should know that his two major points were that they ate lunch a lot, and that it required a major, major crisis of epic proportions to get change made. And barring that, it's very hard in state government to find a way to make something happen.
Well, and also, I think it's, you know, because you lived through it, I mean, it's interesting, because not all the representatives even in that room were around at that time. So some of what Emerson and John Dole and Oxender and others is news to the current legislators, certainly. And some of us have just been around long enough to remember when that happened, but they had a few years of folks working on this, thoughtfully together. When the crisis came in the right form, they were able to grab it, which, you know, some version of the crisis is here. So we need to figure out...
They think it is, because they want to do something about the fifty-five districts that are in deficit. They want to have a special meeting, a special task force, a specialist.
So we'll, I'll get the meetings for state board members to look at the research products and what we're learning, and we'll continue on this pan.
Okay, thanks, John. I wanted to tag on to John's comment a little bit, because I think my experience, particularly in this job, but even in some of the other positions, is that we could do both. We could do, I thought it was a really well-done and thoughtful report, and we're happy to staff it with Wendy, as you see fit, to move the ball on the big-picture report that you're working with Rogers, and, and then I do think there's a second way, which is more immediate for incremental funding, it's not for the big picture. But for example, I think after twenty years of rhetoric, the way we got the early childhood funding was specifically putting it in MDE budgets, specifically making a pitch with rationale behind it, and then ultimately getting Board support here, Governor support, legislative support. It didn't solve the big picture, and shouldn't be either-or. I mean, we've got a, I'm with you a hundred percent, we need to look at this that way. But I'm, but I'm pitching a little bit here that you'll see in a moment. I do think there's an opportunity, if you look at what happened with Willa Run and YPSY last year, that when the legislature even put in a modest amount of money, ten million dollars, we were able to effect change in one district, that I think both of them would have been in deficit, probably at some point with an emergency manager. Both were headed down the tubes in terms of achievement, where I think they're, it's given them an opportunity to restructure and rethink how they're doing that. I think one of your kids is even involved in a result of that, at the tech high school. So, I mean, it's a great example, and what we're going to try to pitch is that, I think there's been a bit of a miss, I'm mostly responsible for this, by the way, but a bit of a misunderstanding about consolidation of services, because right now, we have five million dollars in the budget, and a grant-out proposal right now to districts, but it's for consolidation of districts. They took out the word consolidation of services. And what we're hoping to get is an equal amount, somewhere along the line, a supplemental, worst-case next year, for incentives for districts to try to move towards consolidation of services. So last year, you were allowed to do both, I think ironically, because of the success of Ypsilanti and Willa Run, it got narrowed down to that for focus, but we're going to pitch, because I think a mistake I made was certainly inferring one-size-fits-all in the beginning, and it doesn't. And that's where the studies that say it doesn't save money, it doesn't save money if you had a one-size-fits-all. But you can't say, if I may just be this direct, that Barry County, with two districts, and four thousand kids, and a whole ISD, those kids might not be better served, to be blunt, with one district going to Kent and one going to Calhoun. So if you looked at this incrementally, that might be something with an incentive that they'd be willing to think about, just the same way that Ypsilanti and Willa Run were. So I mean, that was, that's more a carrot approach, you know, that we hope we could get Board support to, so what I'm getting at is, they're not either-or, you go the big picture and try to get it, because I agree, I think it is a crisis now. I get, I get Eileen's point, that because of Calcasca, that one appeared to be more timely at that time, twenty years ago, but it really was building. And I think we, we have, kind of to Kathy's, Kathleen's point, I mean, this issue related to the incoming deficit districts with regularity and more to come, tells us that, do that, but I'm asking that we also think about supporting in our budget, things like the incentive money to try to move the ball where it makes sense. And where I think the studies, as I said, I think have missed it, is it's because even, even, with no malice, even the, the person working on the big report pulled out a study that had to do mainly with consolidation of districts as opposed to services. And so, bottom line is, we're hoping to get an equal amount of money at some point, so that districts could have an incentive to try to build this service structure, and not have it put on them, you know, and let it work over time, and when you show success, and then not have it happen in places where it doesn't, where it doesn't make sense. But, you know, I would end with one last thought about that, that it's, it's kind of interesting, because it's gotten a fair amount, more than we anticipated, and then a fair amount of blowback. And it's like, if we had exactly the right level of, of structure right now, and that you really didn't need to consolidate services anywhere, then wouldn't it follow that, "Well, let's just reduce everything to services being at each of the four thousand buildings?" And obviously, that doesn't make sense. So why is it by happenstance that it just happens to be exactly the right formula now for services, whether it's in Wayne County or Barry County? It's just not, so our attempt, feeble to some degree, more on me, was to try to get across the point that you can do this surgically, and that's kind of the way we're going to start to try to re-establish this, because I do think it has legs. And to the degree it does, and we could get five million dollars for districts, what's the downside? I guess that's the way we're looking at it. And not that in any way it's the big answer to any big picture, it's just not, you know, it's just one piece, but there's some legs with it. And then one other thing that hit me when Joseph was reporting, if you don't think that superintendents, because I've seen it in just this evolution of this one little topic, now that they and principals realize that fifty percent of their evaluation's going to be based on students' growth, they're not interested in burgers and buses anymore either.
You're not interested in what?
In what we're calling burgers and buses. They're, they're fine with let someone else be responsible. I've got, I've got a lot of work to do to move this aircraft carrier around, and now that I'm being held that directly accountable, I think you're going to see more of a willingness to say, "Why are we doing that?" You know, when it makes sense. And when it doesn't make sense, you know, that's where I think I didn't do very well in some of that, is it got kind of away from us.
About your consolidation stuff? So, the schools would still operate, and they wouldn't necessarily close schools, it would just be, because I know, I've talked to people who've gone through consolidation in the more rural areas, and they're talking about bus trips, like two-hour bus trips one-way for their elementary school kid.
That's where it wouldn't make sense.
Right.
Exactly.
But they're then feeling compelled, or whatever, to do that, because of episodes.
Right. No, that's right. And I, and I mean, the focus has to be on services up, and then let the incentive system work for those that might want to consolidate their districts themselves. And even if you consolidate districts, that often doesn't mean you're closing the schools. It may mean that you're just consolidating the two central office functions. And kind of the way we laid out the consolidation of services, you know, Barry won't like this maybe, because, I don't know, but I think, I've been an intermediate soup, and I've been a local soup, you don't know what level of service you have. If you haven't been in one, that's a full-service ISD.
Do you implement a consolidation in your superintendent?
No, I just meant, yeah, we did, actually. We went from, we went from twenty-five districts on our computer system that costs five million dollars in new software, to a hundred districts on that. So what it did was, a hundred districts got their payroll, report cards, parent letters, and everything done through our system. everything done through our system and didn't have to pay $5 million. And it was just, you know, I'm not chucking for Wayne Reeser any more than anyone else, but theoretically Wayne Reeser could do that for the whole state. And the incremental costs would go down, you know, and take a million-plus kids with a one $5 million expenditure rather than a bunch of $5 million expenditures. And I think there's another reason for this. The more we can show that, I do believe there's a connection between those that aren't quick with some of us to do taxes. I mean, I would do a service on sales tax tomorrow, if I could, you know, on services. But those that aren't quick to do it, I think there's a lot in the middle that if they really believe, we're trying everything else, we've gotten rid of the duplication of $5 million of software over and over and over again, we've centralized it, where it made sense, moved services up. And that then they're more open to, okay, let's think about the revenue side then. So anyway, that's my report.
I don't know if you're asking me out.
Are you still doing your report?
What's that? No, I just wanted to respond. I think we, I certainly, all of us would support any and all ways that we can encourage shared service consolidation when it helps save money, particularly if you can repurpose and effective ways to encourage consolidation. And I appreciate your continued also acknowledging it's also healthy for us to look for additional big things we need to do to overhaul the way we organize and fund schools, but very supportive of whatever incentives and funding we can get from those along.
That'd be great. And maybe the committee could even endorse, you know, an incentive of $5 million for service. Incentive, it's voluntary for people to apply or not, like they've done on the regular. Yes, ma'am, and it's my report, but you can go ahead.
I had a question. I see that the appropriations committee is going to have a hearing on it day after tomorrow at which you will be testifying and giving your report. Can you give us, tell us what you're going to say this time?
Well, this is the mandated deficit.
Yeah, I know it's the mandated deficit, but what are you going to say this time? I mean, last time you proposed this consolidation. So are you going to propose anything?
Well, last time, just to be accurate, well, you never know.
Yeah, I'm asking.
As Marty would say, Marty would say after it, that wasn't in the script. No, I don't plan to, but I would like to pitch what I just said to you. I would like to say to them that I think there's an opportunity based on, just to be factual for a minute, I admit, two meetings ago, I'm ordered to do this quarterly, when this first came out as an order, frankly, I was resistant to it. I thought it didn't seem, this is going to sound more about me than I mean it to be, but I didn't know that it was appropriate that you can take an independent constitutional officer and have them come before four times. But having said that, there's no downside. I mean, we should help the legislature understand the deficit problem, and I think it's turned out to be a blessing in disguise. But at first I was going to say, well, I shouldn't say what I was going to say. So we've done these for two years now, and two meetings ago, admittedly, I wandered off-script and said, if I had my way, you know, and services and blah blah. And then we got charged really with bringing something back, and I think I could have and probably should have handled that one differently. But bottom line is, it's reduced to what I just described in terms of what our ask is of them, that if you really want to reduce deficit districts, one of the concrete things you can do, just one, small one, is at least put some incentive money in there for districts where it makes sense to drive these services up and give us some money, give districts some money, the way they're doing on, there's $5 million in there for consolidating districts, there's no money in there for consolidating services. So that would be the only thing I would plan to say. Everything else that we send, I think we can send it to you beforehand, but everything that we do is really formatted now. We just report the number of the new ones, the ones that got off, the ones that look to be coming on. This particular quarterly is a little bit more difficult because there's not audit reports back yet, so some of this is anticipated, who's going to be in deficit. And it's gotten kind of, for lack of a better word, it's a kind of routine, you know, we're reporting the facts, but we'll, and I'll, I've been encouraged, and I'm receiving this as also encouragement, not to wander off to another area. So other than that one thing I mentioned, I won't do that.
You could talk about the Syria situation and how we can get that worked out.
I know.
It's all over the air.
Okay. Yes, we're good then? And Gary, you're up. We're looking forward to your first report.
Terrific.
Thanks for being here and your intelligent participation today was appreciated.
Do I have a minute to connect over there so I can show you some things? Okay.
I think.
You know where he has it.
Oh, yeah.
So it doesn't tell me.
Syria accepted the offer. I know it does that. I don't know if there's a way to make it just.
I pilot a video, a sound come through.
How do you get up?
Or do I have to do anything special?
You have to go home.
I'm doing what you have to do special.
Oh, great.
Just keep touching it.
Yeah.
We're going to the next.
The shortest one.
You know, while we're waiting.
It was brilliant, Gary.
Thank you.
No, this was just.
That's true. You want to?
I'm waiting, I could say.
Gaffey's going to thought.
Yeah, can I? Well, I think Gary's ready now.
Yeah. We could, while Gary's doing that, do you want to?
I'm sorry, I thought I could just jump right on that machine and show you, but.
Don't worry, we'll get it. We'll do it.
Take your time, Gary. We're going to go to consent agenda for a minute. Or maybe the approval, we'll go in order, the approval of the state Board of Ed meeting scheduled for 2014? Motion first?
No, well, sure. I move to adopt.
Move to adopt, support by John. Now discussion, Eileen.
I can make the April 8th meeting, it's spring break for seventh graders that I know.
Oh.
If you wanted to hold it the April Fool's Day, I could make it, or the 15th, which is the start of Passover. Other than that, you'll be doing it without me, which is fine for you and okay for me too.
Would you like to take a look at a possible?
Probably not, because that's not good for me.
Yeah, Passover starts the 15th.
It's okay. I don't have the Vex used calendar with me. Oh, God, that's a real terrible idea. Yeah, I know, I have that one, I have it here. No, I need it, I don't have that.
Oh, God, oh, I understand.
We lose a few of some people.
Yeah.
What day was Passover?
Pardon me?
What day was the, on the 15th?
So it's either the first then, or no change?
Eileen says it's.
It's April, it's the April 8th meeting.
Right.
The first is Tuesday, and it's April Fool's Day, and the 13th, I'm sorry, the 15th is the start of Passover that night.
Yeah, that's, why couldn't you do it?
Yeah, I can't do the 15th.
About, so 15th's out. Any consideration for the first?
Do it on a Wednesday.
That's rattle.
For those that, in case you don't have calendars, should we, unless you feel you can account for that now, we, or you do?
Would you rather do the 16th, Wednesday?
No, that's a holy week and we have services.
So is the first?
First is okay with me.
All right, so I am.
Mertz, you're a key here. You know, it is a little problematic.
And six weeks between that one and the next.
Yeah. It would be, were you guys able to hear, it would be six weeks between that one and the next one if we moved it to the first. That doesn't mean we maybe can't move the other one too then, if you felt.
Maybe we should just keep the eight.
Yeah, I understand.
Meanwhile.
Yeah, as usual.
Okay.
Have Danny calling?
Yeah.
He has delusions of far travel.
Okay. So any other discussion? So it's the original tab here. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same? Great, thank you. Gary, you want me to go one more item?
Sure.
Okay. We're going to go to, well, we're not going to do state and federal, that's a little, but how about the consent agenda?
I move approval of the consent agenda.
Moved by John, supported by Dan. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same? Cool. Comments by state board members? Maybe we could do some of that.
I did have something I wanted, I don't know if any of you have heard, that Liz Bauer is going to be inducted into the Michigan Women's Hall of Fame this year.
Oh, good.
I think it's October 17th.
Is anyone going to be able to be there?
I'm going to be there. I wondered if there's any interest in getting an ad in their journal from the board congratulating her on, a quarter-page ad is $125.
I'll throw it out.
Is that okay with everybody?
Yeah, I'll throw it out.
Okay. I'll work with you when designing something.
Yeah, I think I still have her photo.
Yeah, you have a photo.
Okay.
We have one up there.
I, we have an electronic photo on file, I believe. Pardon me? I think I have one, but if not, I'll contact you for it.
I'm sure most of us would chip in for whatever someone would signal to.
Right, that's what I mean, we would all chip in, right?
Okay.
You okay, Eileen?
Sure.
I would too.
You too?
Sure.
Great.
Can't vote, but I.
That was good.
I can't vote, but I can contribute.
Wow, I wish I could say with that easy.
You can buy a vote.
Right. Oh, wow, now after all these years.
Thank you.
Other board comments?
Yes, sir.
I have signed up because NASV is paying for it for the conference they're having in Pittsburgh on September 20th on Next Generation Science Standards. I'm still struggling with the age-appropriate, and part of the problem is they want to teach, you know, the theory or the ideas to kids in younger grades. We tried to do it with modern math, or, yeah, with the new math, but I don't want to get, so I want to get some more discussion on these and, and they're paying for up to three members, so anyone else who wants to go to Pittsburgh Friday, that's.
Pittsburgh in the fall, I mean, you can't beat it.
Really?
No, I'm actually.
We're still not supposed to laugh at that.
No.
River City.
Boston can knock us, I think we can. On a serious note, is that between now and the next board meeting?
It is, yeah.
Because that's tentatively when we had thought about bringing the standards back.
That would be, I think the also.
So maybe others would want to consider that, and we'd get to Mertz if you're interested in also attending.
Thinking about it, yeah.
What weekend is that?
What's it?
What week, what day is that?
It's a Friday, September 20th.
So your thoughts, and if you'd like to attend?
You go on Thursday night, is that the idea?
Please let Mertz know. Any other board members on the comments section? Then we're going to Mr. Aboud. Yes, sir.
Going to Pittsburgh?
Thank you.
And I look forward to being part of the Next Generation Science Standards conversation. As part of this, you'll kind of hear some of the context for that and the tie-in. So I'm Gary Aboud, and just to kind of reintroduce myself to those who I haven't met yet and to those who I do know, I've been teaching chemistry and physics and biology to high school students for the past six years. I started my career in Arizona, but I came back home to Michigan, and I've been teaching at Gross Point North High School now for three years. So you might be wondering, if you don't know me already, who this guy is, and so I'd just like to tell you a little bit about myself, show you a part of my classroom, and then tell you about some of the things I've been up to and that I'm going to be up to for this year. So as a science teacher, I got my original training at Wayne State University. I was on track to do their pre-med program and go to medical school, but through some practical experiences in a hospital setting doing medical research, I learned that I had a true calling for teaching. So I went back to school to earn my master's degree in education at Saginaw Valley State. I am happily married to another teacher who, my wife teaches special education to high school students. I'm a runner and a cyclist, and this year I have a new role in Gross Point as an instructional coach. It's a really great, great role and a great opportunity, and I'll tell you a little bit about that as well. So as part of the, being Michigan Teacher of the Year, I've gotten a number of requests to provide staff development around the state already, and over the summer I was very active in providing staff development and spent about two to three weeks working with teachers around the state. I trained a one-week workshop on Next Generation Science Standards for chemistry teachers, as well as worked with Detroit Public Schools for all of their middle school and high school teachers on Next Generation Science Standards. I also spent an extensive amount of time working with teachers on educational technology and instructional best practices. I've also had the pleasure of teaching at the graduate level courses in learning theory and instructional practice and pedagogy, and so I've been able to share a lot of my expertise over the summer already. The district in Gross Point, the administrators saw this as a tremendous opportunity for me to be able to share my expertise and help all of our teachers augment their practice and move towards 21st century teaching and learning. So they asked me to step away from the classroom this year and to work with K-12 teachers doing instructional coaching. And what I've been doing over the past couple of weeks is going into classrooms and seeing all of the buildings in our district, and I've seen nearly every elementary school classroom thus far. Later this week, I'll be visiting the other middle schools, and I've visited our rival high school. What I've seen is tremendous, and I'm looking forward to working with teachers in grade-level teams, subject area teams, and also in vertical teams. So doing some one-on-one and group coaching, as well as providing staff development, is what I've been up to and what I will be up to this year. That being said, I wanted to give you a little glimpse of what my classroom looks like so you can kind of have a sense of where I come from as both a science teacher and an integrator of technology into my classroom. So this is a clip from my physics and chemistry classes last year, and it shows them engaging in inquiry-based practices, collaborative learning, project-based learning, and using mobile devices in the classroom. We run a bring-your-own-device class where students can use whatever mobile device they have to engage and augment their learning and to help support teaching practice. It was a 15-minute tutorial introducing teachers as part of the RMC Association's Connected Educator Series, and what they asked me to do is to come in and feature my classroom and some of the things that we were doing, and to put together a screencast instructing teachers on how to get started using mobile devices in the classroom. So this was an excerpt from that project last year. It's really been a great honor to be awarded Michigan Teacher of the Year, and it's really helped me think of education beyond the four walls of my classroom and building, and this summer has been really exciting and informative to me and helping me understand the bigger picture of education and the role that I play in that, and the role that all of you and all of us play in that. The last thing I'd like to share with you, and you may have seen this already, is last week, just after Labor Day, the Detroit Free Press came out, they came out and wanted to interview me, to ask me tips for starting the school year, and I said, I'm really sorry, I can't meet with you, I'm going to be working with teachers. And they said, tell us about that, and I was giving an orientation seminar for all of our new teachers in the district and teaching them about 21st century teaching and learning. We were going through activities they could use in their classroom to get started with creativity, collaboration, communication, and critical thinking. It turned into more than a segment about advice for the school year, and it became a front-page article, Above the Crease, which I found out is a big deal, Above the Crease, where they came out and featured me working with teachers. Above the fold? Okay. Thank you.
You can just retire.
So this is kind of a really great moment for me, but also for our school and for teaching, because the article featured so many things that were not part of the traditional stereotype of classroom teaching, and I really liked that, that we were talking about 21st century teaching and learning, and that we were able to give that message out to the public, which doesn't always get there. And in hearing a lot of the work that you're already doing and that came up today, it just made me think that all of us in education hear these great things and we're exposed to it, and we don't always get that message out to the public, kind of like what was said earlier. said earlier, that PR piece is something I'm hoping to do this year. So, thanks so much for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks so much, Gary. John and I didn't hear any applause, you noticed.
Nope, running and cycling. Never.
Can I ask?
We have athletes.
Can I ask one question?
And I learned to swim until I was about 25, so that's very strong.
Are there any, were there any students that didn't have their own mobile device?
There were about, 20% of the students did not have their own mobile device, and so what I did is I went out and purchased a class set of mobile devices to lend out to those students to kind of fill in the gap.
Oh, you purchasing yourself?
Yeah. Now.
Your teachers would do this. Got the teachers, I have the teachers too.
But there, you know, there are some creative solutions, I think, for doing BYOD programs that can fill in the gap with less funding than it would require to do a full one-to-one program, and there are some, some creative conversations, I think, that could really be, really should be considered for districts that are considering mobile devices but aren't at the place where they can fully go one-to-one yet.
John, please.
This instructional leadership role, was that something that Gross Point had done before with others, or was it sort of created given your situation?
It was kind of created. One of the things they noticed was that I was already getting a lot of requests to be pulled away from the district, and sort of being proactive to make sure there was minimal impact on student learning, they decided it would make the most sense to have me serve a role outside of the classroom this year so that students could get a consistent teacher in front of them, and that I could also help to augment teaching and learning around the district.
You know, it's the kind of role, it'd be great if we somehow created conditions in which more districts felt they could organize that type of effort and support it.
Yeah.
For their teachers and for everybody.
Yes.
Well, and, you know, hopefully, as, as the year goes on, and I can report back to you some of the things that I've come up with, hopefully, we could maybe work to, to create a model to showcase with other districts that might be interested.
Thank you, Gary. Marty and Cassandra. I guess Marty kicks it off.
I will kick it off, I'll keep it brief. Like, has been discussed already today, that the House, a joint House Senate Education Policy Standing Committee will meet tomorrow, your testimony from Dr. Deb Ball on the MCEE recommendations, and also from Sandy Jacobs, from the National Council on Teacher Quality, as they begin to draft legislation to move forward on the educator and administrator evaluations. A joint House and Senate Education Approve Committee is also hearing Thursday to have testimony, the quarterly testimony from Mike on the deficit districts report, and in fact, to kind of take advantage of John's offer to have the board support Mike's upcoming recommendation to the board. Mike asked me to put together a brief statement that maybe the board could support, so that we can give to the legislature along with Mike's presentation on Thursday, to support no less than $5 million to fund grants for pilot projects for the, to drive the consolidation of services to the ISD level. So, I don't know if we want to take care of that now or do it when we take care of the other statement that Cassandra will discuss.
What do we think of John?
Well, we can certainly do it now, if people are wanting to discuss that a bit and encourage supportive that position. I appreciate Mike, you're bringing it to us.
So, can I consider that for discussion purposes, a motion?
I move support of the statement as Marty wrote.
Okay.
Support.
Supported by Richard. Further discussion.
I'm sorry, can you?
Sure. In an effort to provide financial and systemic incentives for local school districts to consolidate their administrative functions and responsibilities to the intermediate-school district level, the state board moves to encourage the legislature to appropriate no less than $5 million to fund grants for pilot projects to drive consolidation of services to the ISD level. Pretty short, simple, direct.
I just have a question about the consolidation process. So, when there is a consolidation process, what happens to the employees? Is there any sort of recommendations or regulations that there, when that happens, that, well, for instance, if they're in a labor union, does it, is there, what happens to them in that situation? Is it, is it ruled by MERC, rulings on it, or is it ruled, is there some, I'm just looking at the downside and how it, some negative effects that it might have, and I just want some.
Well, I think in the, you know, if we look at last year's experience, and the proposals that come in, I mean, what this would in effect do, let's face it, is it would get it back to where it was last year, which there was $10 million for consolidation of districts and consolidation of services. Now there's $5 million for just consolidation of districts, and this would kind of try to put it back to a par, and then they, in their proposals, would describe how that may or may not. And I.
But there's no, like, necessarily recommendations or direction from the department about how that should, how that should.
If we were to get, if we were to get that, we would, we can bring back criteria for that grant. Why don't we do that? If they were able to, in a supplemental, allow, you know, because that's the earliest they would be, would be possibly a supplemental, maybe not till next year, then we would bring criteria back for that grant, as we do for the others, correct?
Correct.
And then that's where we could make sure that that was accounted for. Because what they did, you know, part of this is trying to offer some sugar and some carrots for folks to think about it. Boards would have to approve it, local boards, for even, to even be able to submit a proposal. But we could, we could shape criteria as the board sees fit for that grant.
The language, consolidate administrative services.
Administrative, functions and responsibilities, yeah.
So, help me with that. I've always been, well, the notion of non-instructional services being regionalized and consolidated at a broader level, is that the same thing, and is administrative services, non-instructional services, is there any helpful clarification here?
What would you, what would you prefer?
I prefer non-instructional services, but I don't know what administrative services mean.
Yeah, what does it mean? What is it?
Well, we can say, we can say non-instructional. To be clear. There's room for both, but I think there's, this is such a drop in the bucket, in some ways, it's trying to get the thinking going, really. So why don't?
Well, what is the difference between administrative and non-instructional? Okay, I'm thinking, is administrative, that's just like the financial, the sort of the administration-level functions, or am I misunderstanding? Because the non-instructional seems broader and would include like bus drivers and maybe cafeteria workers, or, you know, secretaries. I mean, what's the difference between?
But I would, I don't know if it will matter much, I mean, so, we'll come, we'll get back with criteria, and that will depend on who actually applies for it, right?
Right. I just didn't know if there was a difference, if we're changing the language from the proposal, like, are we changing the actual functions?
It would be the board's will on that, I mean, your language is fine.
I need to throw in another question, too, which is that at this, if you put down ISDs, then charters won't be eligible for consolidation treatment under, under a grant like that. And you certainly could have, in an area where you have enough charters pulled together, there could be a reason for them to economize, too.
What would they?
Because it's intermediate-school districts, and they're not, they're individual, aren't they?
Well, no, we, we did, Wayne did computer services for charters.
Well, you just don't want to do anything that will exclude them, and they're not an intermediate-school district, is my understanding, they're a school district, but not.
Well, they're an LEA, just like a traditional district.
Right.
Like in DC, effectively, the ISD, the state superintendent's office, they handle transportation for all schools in the district, chartering traditional, like, I don't know why, I don't, I'm not aware of anything.
Just the opposite, I'm saying what, yeah. I'm sorry, I'm, I'm just saying, you don't want to have language in there that would exclude charters from being able to band together to do something as a reduction in cost, a consolidation of services. They don't have to band together, they can do it through the ISD. Just districts.
Why can't they do it through the ISD?
Maybe districts.
Why can't they do it through the ISD?
Because they're not part of the ISD. In other words, they don't.
Well, if they're located in the, that area, they are.
This says ISD level.
Yeah.
Which, for me, would create a space for, let's do something to share services at that regional level where it makes sense.
Wayne does computer services for charters, you know, those that wish to have it. The 100 I mentioned that they moved towards, some of those were charter schools.
I'll come just to.
This is probably relevant, too, just in the criteria, it should just, you know.
Yeah, we could be clear. Yeah, and we would obviously bring the criteria back if this were to even happen.
Is this likely to speed up the privatization of services?
You know, my view is, I think if we talk about more vibrant ISDs, not more likely, because ISDs can, can do this. And it's not to put a value either way, I'm just saying, right now, if you look at what's happened without people consolidating services, what's happened? There's been a lot more that's gone, you know, my, my fear, and this isn't like a pro or anti-privatization argument so much, but I was always aware of Pontiac when I was a local superintendent, where they were privatized until they couldn't make any money, and then overnight, they weren't privatized, so I was always cautious and felt that if we had our own employees and had our own plan, that's my own, and I'm speaking for myself here to say that, but I just think you increase the chances of a thoughtful economical approach at an ISD level. And when that doesn't happen, and there's not money saved there, then what ends up happening, just look at the evidence, is, is people are going, you know, I don't want to fault people that are making decisions at a board level to go privatize, but I just remember, suddenly it was pulled out, this is 20 years ago, so I don't mean to make it a current issue, but they, the rug was pulled out from underneath Pontiac, like the day before school opened, and suddenly, they had to scramble and try to hire workers and get kitchen equipment back and all that. I'm not sure I should have even said that, that's just my own, that's not really an anti-privatization as much as my own comfort level with what we were trying to do then. But I think, you know, the, I don't want to overstate this too much, because I think the criteria building can really help shape this as you see fit.
You could shape criteria as the best places that have found ways to cut costs in services have, if they did it out, they make it very explicit that, you're organized labor, or whoever's providing the service is, it's an equal, you know, opportunity to get it and win it, you know? Things like that, I mean, those were all spelled out in the criteria.
I'm worried that we privatize, and then find they didn't do a very good job, and the local district has to supervise, and they don't always do that very effectively. So I think it's a problem when they privatize, so.
No, I agree, I just, in shaping the criteria for how you do this, you can shape the opportunity for it not to end up as described.
Okay.
Dan, please.
I was just gonna recommend that we take the, you know, whatever that right language is.
Call the question.
Taking Lupe's job, or was that a politician?
Right from Lupe.
Falling down on her job.
I said, give a motion.
We had a motion in a second, and the question was called, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same?
Same.
Great, thank you. Marty.
At the, at the legislative committee meeting, a draft statement was started, and then.
After calling, I'm sorry, but after calling the question, shouldn't we have voted on the motion?
That's what, I thought, I think that's what we thought, we were just doing.
No, the motion to call the question, is that what you're asking?
We voted to call the question, but we didn't proceed to the main motion.
Okay.
Did you want to do it over again?
How come we were voting on the motion?
I just still wanted to make sure that this would allow a group of charters to pull together and consolidate services. I think that's the goal, not that, it would, not to restrict this funding to ISDs, or is it to restrict the funding to ISDs?
No, I, I think there's a way to word that that says any cluster of LEAs or the ISD, because I think you're probably right, there's, there's points where even within an ISD, it might even be so-called traditional districts might want to cluster around, I don't know, Utica for the sake of discussion, San Judy, and would like to do something with them. So we could, I think that was the spirit of that. I was just trying to move towards economies of scale.
Yes.
And it wouldn't have to be centric. So I, I'm gonna do my Robert's homework and debrief today, but in the case, you're correct, and I think you may be, can we do that then, and call actually the question? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same?
This is to vote, right?
This is to vote.
So we already voted on calling the question?
Right. Now we're voting on the motion.
I abstained.
You're abstaining on both.
No, I would have voted for the first one.
Calling.
Calling the question.
Okay.
I'm fine with that.
Okay. And then, and now we're actually voting on the motion. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same?
No.
Abstention?
I'm abstaining, too.
Okay.
So I'll hand it off to Cassandra to discuss the statement on the board support of the Michigan Council of Educator Effectiveness.
Thank you, Marty. Well, we've talked about this a lot today, so I think everyone's now up to speed on, on what this is, but the MCE report really was something that was presented, or should be presented, to the governor's office, the legislature, and the state board of education, and as such, the legislative committee thought that was important for us to weigh in, and the timing seems to be perfect, considering that the legislature's gonna be meeting this week to discuss the MCE report, and so we drafted the attached statement that you should have, and I think we have copies.
Mm-hmm.
Yep. Should we have a motion before we?
That'd be good.
Okay.
I would. Oh, you'll move, okay, I'll second it.
Moved by Cassandra, supported by Kathleen. Now discussion.
Okay. So, the statement really highlights a number of things within the recommendations, one being that the recommendations really are to support and improve teaching and learning, and not to punish teachers, which we all appreciated, that particular goal. Also, that it's both for teachers as well as administrators. We also thought it's important that there be professional learning opportunities to go along with the recommendations, so we certainly support that as well, because part of this really is training folks to be able to do this type of work. We also recognize that the recommendations are gonna come with additional costs to the state, and so we recommend that the state adequately fund the resources necessary to fully implement the recommendations. Also, thought that it's important that the MCE recommendations, in order to be effective, are incorporated within our colleges of education, should include the evaluation process for their prospective teachers and administrators as well. Ultimately, we say that we endorse the MCE recommendations, and we call on the legislature and the administration, if they're going to approve these recommendations, it is our intent that they be improved in their entirety. These recommendations and this, this program will not work if the legislature begins to pick it apart and then rebuild it in, in whatever manner they deem they'd like to see. We think that it needs to be approved in its entirety, or, you know, move along, but if we start picking at it, then the whole thing is just, it's not as strong, and it will not work quite as effectively. I do have one minor change in the last paragraph. We say, the second line says recognizing the complexity of effective teacher evaluation, that should be educator evaluation, so I would recommend that we make that change. And then again, the last sentence says that we support the adoption of the report's recommendations in its entirety.
Further discussion, John.
Michelle has a, like, a sentence that she's, would like to propose, which I hope we'll discuss and endorse, and, but I just want to reiterate Cassandra's points, and thank the committee, too, for your work. As you heard from Joseph, and thank Joseph and the committee, from my view, the genius and utility of that commission's work was it took what could be a potentially punitive or gotcha teacher evaluation, teacher tenure reform process, and this is the key to teacher tenure reform, and put it in an expert-led, but also a, a group that wanted to figure out how this can work with and for teachers, and help them improve, and be supportive, and something they believe in, that they helped create, and so, that's what I think was produced. And it does, it's just all recommendations now, it does require legislative action, and it requires funding, and requires changes to the law that passed that set it in motion, too, the teacher tenure law. So there needs to be action, so I think, given that the report was to us, the governor, and the legislature, we need to weigh in very strongly, as I think we are, to encourage the governor and legislature to now do their bits, that we endorse the report, and that we very strongly support its implementation and its funding, which is so critical.
Did you want to attend the sentence, Michelle?
Yeah. The sentence would go at the end of the third paragraph, which states the report, let me sure I'm doing this right. Yeah. Where it starts, the SBE commends the, I think it's the second paragraph. I can recount. For very comprehensive and thorough, whatever. I would add to the end, "The SBE also supports school administrators working collaboratively with teachers and their elected representatives in deciding which evaluation to use, implementing it effectively and fairly and providing peer review and evaluation process." So, the idea is that to ensure that it's a collaborative process where teachers are, are part of this and included in the conversation. I think it'll make it a more effective tool in the end.
Can you repeat the sentence? Is it, is it, we encourage or we support?
I have, "SBE also supports school administrators working collaboratively with teachers and their elected representatives in deciding which evaluation tool to use, implementing it effectively and fairly and providing peer review in the evaluation process."
Would, just a thought, would you want to say administrators and local boards? Because the boards will often have the say on, on which instrument they're choosing to use.
The school boards and the administrators and teachers.
Yeah. The spirit behind what you're saying.
The school boards and teachers, yeah.
We were encouraging them all to work collaboratively in picking out the RCE.
Right.
Because I think it's.
It would be done at a board meeting typically.
You say encourages instead of supports, is that what you're saying?
The only thing I would point out, maybe there's two separate things here. Maybe there's a press release that talks about how we would like to see this fleshed out, but that this document, it pertains to the educator, the educator effectiveness report. And I, I'm not sure, I think what, there's a message here to the legislature and then I think there's a message to the world. And I, I believe that Michelle's is a message to the world. I don't know that we want to get into that. Don't we just want to convince the legislature that they need to do this? They need to do it well and that they, it would be good if they did it fast? To me, it's about three paragraphs and then there's a broader statement to everybody else saying, not only should they do it, but there are other components that would make it strong and, and work very well.
Well, if, if we, I see what you're saying, but if that were the case, wouldn't we then remove the, this, the paragraph on the colleges of education?
That's, that, I, I'm fine going there. I, I, I'm worried that this is going to be so long that it won't be effective for the legislature. So, or maybe it's bullet points. We've done this before when we've tried to tighten things up, knowing that our intended reader may just go, sorry, that microphone didn't pick that up, but so what? So, I just want it punchy and I want us saying to them, this is good work, we believe it's effective for the field. And then the larger message of, if this is done right, it would be extremely successful. There are other additional components that we know of that the educator effectiveness report does not list. But they're not going to incorporate that in the legislation, I don't think. If that's the goal, if you want to enumerate things that you want them to put in legislation, then that's a different story.
Okay. I think it's more of a, you know, it doesn't seem like, you know, we want you to pass this law and here's the verbiage of, of the law. I think the way I saw this, and maybe I'm wrong because I wasn't on the committee, was the message goes out to the legislature, but it also is going to be used and seen as coming from the board as a directive either to the department or to the education community and the state through that. And I really think it's so integral to the evaluation process to have peer, have a sentiment of peer review in there and also to get the buy-in. I mean, there's a lot of skepticism to me with regard to teachers sort of feeling locked out of the process. And I think having buy-in will make it more effective. I think it's worth including, because I do think it, maybe they won't, you know, pass specific legislation on it, but I think it's an important enough factor that it, it shouldn't just be on a press release. I think it's really critical to being an effective tool, to having it actually have buy-in and at the local level and not just seen as a, sort of a top-down thing. So, and have buy-in from all the key people at a local level. I.
So, I guess the technical question is, is that a friendly amendment or whatever to the mover and shaker?
It is. And I appreciate, yeah. I appreciate your point, Eileen, but I think this is a statement of both support, encouragement to legislature and kind of our perspective on the, the report and its recommendations and a bit of exhortation there about how we hope it will be applied. So, I don't think it adds too much length or, or distraction. So, I would support us adding that sentence and the other amendments and hope we would all support this.
Richard?
I don't object to the adding that sentence, but it seems to me it might go with the fourth paragraph on implementation rather than the second paragraph, which essentially commends the report itself.
I think that's a good point.
Okay.
And that might get closer to kind of Eileen's point also.
Yeah, that sounds good.
But it's after Solomon over here. Well, the monopoly king anyway.
Then I, I would just, wordsmith it in the second paragraph. It should say, "It emphasizes that effective evaluations strengthen and improve teacher and administrative practice to improve student learning." It goes on from there. Yeah, it's just, these are small things. It's, it's fine, it's just a little wordy and I'm just trying to, anyway. It emphasizes that effective evaluations strengthen and improve teacher and administrative practices to improve student learning.
Okay, so take out the "are done."
Yeah, they're just, they're just, it's just small things.
That's better.
And then you could do, for these goals to be reached instead of an order for it. And the only reason I'm doing it is I'm just trying to make it punchier, so.
Which?
In the next paragraph, "The report calls for systemic change for schools, for these goals to be reached."
Okay.
Training those charged with performing evaluations is absolutely essential.
Everyone okay or the mover and shaker with the punchier version?
Punchy, punchy.
Okay, can, can, any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same? Thank you, that's great. Great statement. And timely. And let's see, so.
The next one is the discussion on school closure policy and this is very quick. Just last month, when we were having our conversations, Dan had a couple of recommendations after we had heard from many concerned parents about the closure of Oakman School. And these were more discussions in general of suggestions that we as a State Board of Education would have if we were to develop a model policy for the closure of a school. And we discussed these at the legislative committee meeting and decided that rather than just take the few ideas that came out as a result of that meeting, what we really should consider doing is actually developing a model policy from the State Board of Education outlining the things that we would suggest if a school district were considering the closure of a school, such as, you know, there should be a public comment period, there, you know, these types of things. And so, we as the legislative committee are willing to put something together, but we want to solicit ideas from all of the board members before we do that so that everyone has an opportunity to share with us what you think a closure would look like. This would be, you know, a non-binding, it's not something we can force on districts, but it would certainly be something that we as the State Board of Education would say, these would be our minimum recommendations if you were to look at doing something like this. So, I am just throwing it out there that, you know, we don't even need to necessarily discuss it right now at the board table, but if you have ideas, if you could send them to either myself or one of the other members of the legislative committee and then at the next meeting, we can start compiling these and come up with a, a draft statement.
Excellent. Good. Great report.
The Varner Protocol.
Good. So, are we good?
I have one more thing.
Yes, ma'am.
The next legislative committee meeting actually coincides with a statewide meeting being held on, I believe, school finance.
16th.
Yeah, on September 16th. So, those of us on the legislative committee might want to consider changing the date of that meeting because I know Kathleen wants to be there. I think Lupe, did you want to be there as well? So.
It's the deficit?
Yes, right.
And the MASP.
The conference that the department is co-sponsoring.
With MASP and the rest, yeah. Okay.
So, maybe Merz, if you could send out an email so we can reschedule that meeting?
Yep.
Thank you.
And that'd be great. Thank you for those that could make that. I think it shows, it's as much showing the flag that this is an important issue and we're trying to get ahead of it and help districts get ahead of it so they don't end up in the process that is overwhelming us here in the department, so. Well, great, I think, and we did the comments. Next meeting is October 8th. I think we're done and we did it on time, really, so.
Before time.
Yeah.